All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Certification of closed session pursuant to subsection 242-3712 D of the Code of Virginia nineteen fifty is amended each member of the Board of Supervisors upon road call certifies that to base of their knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and only such business, public business matters that were identified in the motions by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by the Board Supervisors. Any member of the Board of Supervisors who believes that there was a departure from the requirements shall stay so prior to the vote indicating the substance of that departure in his or her judgment has taken place. Are there any supervisors who believe a departure has taken place? Being none, if you agree that the matters heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting were pursuant only to the motions by which the closed meeting was convened, please signify by saying yea or yes. Tim Lovelace?
Yes.
Luanne Wallace?
Yes.
Carl Ray?
Yes.
Deputy?
Yes.
Steve Breeding?
Yes.
Ors Christian?
Yes.
Rebecca Dye?
Yes.
Ma'am, you have approval to return to regular session.
At this time, we'll please stand in for the invocation of Mr. Travis Lambert and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Good Lord, bird. Father in heaven, it's once again we come to just call upon your holy and righteous name. We've just come giving you thanks for this day, for this opportunity to gather and conduct business. And no matter what the occasion is, Lord God, we just pray that you are in the midst that you guard this session, that you give the community a peace. And, Lord, we pray for our board members, that you give them wisdom and knowledge to conduct business. And no matter what the decision it is, or whatever it is, we pray that it will be done in this place here tonight. So we give you praise and thanks in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, at this time, we need a motion to approve the agenda as stated. We have a motion for that. So move, Madam Chair. Thank you. A second?
Second.
Tim, all those in favor?
Aye.
Our first thing is to recognize some of our wonderful employees here in the county with Ms. Susan Barton, the Eagle Scouts, with their achievement awards. If you'd like to come up, Susan, and have our voice come up.
I'd like to thank you guys for having me on. I'm very proud of them, and my board for many years that get where they're at now and started at first grade. They've worked hard to get here, and I'm very proud of them.
Our first young man is Mason Curtis Barton. Elliot Sinclair Ford. Ethan James Chaffin. And Benjamin Sam Green. And our grandparents. project.
Thank you all for entertaining this motion.
Pictures. We'll step back, keep boys getting in, and we'll all slip back up here. And if you want to take pictures?
We've had an approach from an instruction company.
Aye. Great parents.
Grandparents, parents.
Yes.
The company's name is Heads Escavation.
That'll be good.
Yes, can we scoot in here?
They're a general contractor out of Tennessee.
Can you see everybody?
They do have a general contractor's license in Virginia insured.
Okay, ma'am. I gotta have one for the page. Hold on just a second, I gotta give one for the page. Thank you, sir.
And we have an upcoming state tournament, Little League Baseball, Boys eleven and twelve. That's the most popular state. So a tournament, so it'll be a lot of traffic coming. So an all-district event from current date will be held on our county property of the Glade. So the proposed area, we're going to have a limited seat. Currently, we have in between the softball field, the dirt field, and the boys' field there at the top right. There is a space in between there that will also have to be covered by a net to separate the two fields, so some action will be going on both fields. So that's the only position on that side. We do have a couple leechers down on the bottom left for the softball. For the boys' field, the only area beyond the first base side of the dugout. There is some options in the outfield for the softball. So what we've talked with this contractor proposing is the red area is to cut out a bench in the outfield. That road that goes up to left, that goes up to our tee ball field. It will interconnect there where we can get handicapped access to people there. It will run all the way across the outfield. Now, the proposed width, we're hoping to be ten to twelve feet wide. It is rocky on the right-hand side, so that's going to be just as we go with the excavation. There possibly be a removal of two trees. And the contractor will do handle all of that. That will hopefully get us above receiving. A lot of people would prefer to bring their own lawn chair rather than sit on our leechers. So that's our current proposal. He is volunteered to do this work at his cost, bringing his equipment, his personnel, and do the excavation.
So this is going to be available, just bring lawn chairs, carry your agency?
Yes.
You're not even putting a fleet?
Um, no current plans. But we do have a ground with Honda for seating that we have to use. But we don't anticipate using it there. We prefer just to leave that open, bring chairs, the pop-up tents, and the way they can view both games.
Are you going to use the two fields left there, the other one's a senior league field?
Yes. These two fields will be the only two fields that will be in place for that tournament. On the softball field, the dirt infield, we'll actually have to construct a mound for that from divisions.
Me and Lonzo went down there Thursday and looked at this. And I know you've got two axes over for two trees, but they look like there was two more that might need to be removed at the very end. Did you look at those also?
Yeah, it's going to be kind of where he comes into it, but that's a possibility too. I think he will do this on his. The only, on the far x, just below that is our scoreboard. So there is, there is a, that interference, but it's below it, so hopefully we can just stay above it and not interfere with that. There is two, I can't really see it in this picture, but there's two already benches coming from the fence that will help with getting actually to the seating location. And he will kind of redo those, cut those out, and make it accessible from the ground and from the upper side.
So we do need a motion to approve this excavation work, and this will be done. He's agreed to do it at his cost, and he's working with it. And he'll haul away everything, cut down all trees, remove all, take care of it. Earn key job, right?
Well, we're in negotiations. He wants to do all the excavation, all tree removal, at his cost. He would like to negotiate with the ENS controls, whether it be the county or the Little League put up the ENS controls along the bottom of the excavation. So if that's something we can do, or we can possibly negotiate with him to do, so.
Call me, Keith.
Let me. Well, myself and Mr. Ray met out here and looked at the site last Thursday. Like he said, he's already got partial bends already cut. But from the county's perspective, I was concerned about, one, the insurance from a contractor being on county property, and our attorney will tell you that, too. The second was the ENS controls, because it's more than 10,000 square feet by the time you go the length of the rest, which we would be, you know, applicable to. So even though it's on county property, we would still have to implement the ENS controls. Now, if the board, the county wanted Harvey, the PSA, we do seal, you know, ENS controls upon our previous two construction sites right now. So if you guys wanted to partner with the Little League, you know, to let them do the cut in conjunction with the oversight of the county administrator and the building inspector, that way we can keep controls of the ENS issues and work and partner with them and do it. So that would be the type of motion. Work in conjunction.
Question, if I may. Let's go ahead and get a motion on the floor.
I can make a motion for Heads Escavating to come in and to bring this out so we can have additional seating included with the county to do the ENS.
Okay. We have a second. Steve, all right, Lou.
Okay, thank you. The discussion I want to have pertains to ENS. And so, just to clarify, Lonzo, you will be in charge of doing the plans?
Yes, ma'am. We are the planner and the reviewer, so we can do it on our own authority, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So you're going to see that the plans are done, filed, and get your permit or whatever with the EQ, and then move forward with that. So the county's going to do it all with the help of the PSA, correct?
Yes, ma'am. We walked it off from the linear footage that we had, and I was anticipating from the bottom of the scoreboard up to the tree level line, it actually does not exceed 10,000 square. But it being a county project on county property, we will still maintain it as though it is 10,000 square.
Thank you.
It would not be exempt anyway, because it's not residential.
It isn't. The county has the option to exempt itself from the ENS, on the ENS property, on our own property.
Well, I don't think the ENS is going to be a big issue there.
No.
Silk instance to us.
But to give, but where he was looking at, to remove all the two trees that you have marked here, and like Mr. Ray said, to give, you know, while you're there, you might as well prepare the next two trees for future use. It would make a great radius seating area for it. It would, sincerely. And I mean, you've already got partial beaches there anyway. You're just going to continue with your cut and slope, and then reseed, and you'll have the controls in. Okay?
Yes, but you do not want to have the contractor volunteering to have an ENS problem on his hands.
No.
So I think we just need to make that clear.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, thank you. Yes.
All right. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor of this motion?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Mr. Lambert, it looks like we want to be in business helping you with your outfield. And good luck. Hope our boys win you.
Thank you very much.
All right. The next item on the agenda is our organizational meeting, since this is the first meeting of the year. So at this time, we'll turn it back. Mr. Lester?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I'd like, as the first motion, I would like to open the floor up for nominations for Russell County Chairman. I'd like to nominate Steve Breeding.
I'd like to nominate Rebecca Dye.
Any more motions? I move to that the nominations be closed in voting in reverse order and show of hands. Rebecca Dye. Steve Breeding. I ask that the nominations be closed and Rebecca Dye as the Russell County Chairman person.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Next, we have the election for our Vice Chair. So I'll open the floor for any motion for Vice Chair.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make the nomination for Steve Breeding to be Vice Chair.
Any others?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make the motion that nominations cease and Mr. Breeding be elected by acclamation.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So Mr. Breeding will be our Vice Chair. Thank you. Next, we have the election of our County Clerk of the Board and our Deputy Clerk. First is the Clerk of the Board, which is generally has been Mr. Lester.
Making a motion, we'd like Mr. Lonzo Wester as Clerk of the Board.
Any others? All right. Saying none, we'll elect him with acclamation. All those in favor?
Aye.
What, a motion? Second. Okay, sorry, Katie.
I'll take it.
Second. Thank you, David. All right. Yep, Lou.
Now the Dick.
Okay. Steve, and then Lou. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
So Lonzo, you are our clerk. And our Deputy Clerk, we need a motion for that.
Nominate Vicki Porter.
All right. Thank you, Tim. Second. David?
Move, nomination cease, and we elect Mr. Porter by acclamation.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have the adoptions of Robert's Rules of Order. Do we have a motion for that?
Some move.
Tim?
Second.
Steve, all those in favor?
Aye.
And the adoption of our county bylaws.
I'll make it.
All right. Second. David? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we will adopt our county bylaws. All right, the next item we have is our 2020 Board of Supervisors' regular meeting schedule. And that will be the first Monday of every month. At six here, unless we have an executive session at five. Do I have a motion to accept the first Monday of every month?
Some move.
Tim, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, Steve, we have a second. Yes. 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 Yes.[1241.12] Aye. With Ors. All right, the next, we have our December seventeenth meeting that we had with the Russell County PSA. We have a motion to accept those.
Some move, Madam Chair.
Steve, do we have a second?
Second.
Carl, all those in favor?
Aye.
And you want to abstain on that one, too?
You want... Okay. All right. Second thing of business is to approve our expenditures for the month. We have a motion to pay our bills.
Some move.
Tim? Steve, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Now, this one is the approval of our 2020 authorized payments. This is our routine payments such as the electric bill, postage, water, anything that comes regularly that are our expenditures that we have to take care of. And sometimes we have to get it in a little early in case of a holiday or something like that. So we have a motion to authorize these payments that are routine monthly payments.
Some move, Madam Chair.
Lou, thank you. A second?
Second.
Carl, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, our next thing for the, on our agenda are the appointments to our boards. The first we have, we have two that run concurrent with our term. This is the Cumberland Plateau Economic Development Executive Board. And at this time, we have Mr. Reading and Ms. Wallace, Steve and Luanne. We'll take this one at a time.
Madam Chair. I'd like to nominate Steve Reading for the Cumberland Plateau Economic Development Board.
Second.
Tim? All right. Oh, any others? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, our second position, do we have any motion for that?
Chair, I'd like to nominate Luanne Wallace for that position.
All right. A second?
Second.
Tim? All those in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have the Cumberland Plateau Economic Development Commission. This meets quarterly with, along with the Economic Development Executive Board. We have two positions open here, one for Carl Ray and Tim Lovelace. So we'll open the floor for any nominations here.
Nominate Carl Ray.
Carl?
I'll second Tim.
Tim? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
And our second position?
Nominate Tim Lovelace.
Second.
All right, Lou, second. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Third is our Planning Commission. This will be a board member.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
It is with great pleasure that I would like to nominate our newest board member, Oris Christian, to that position.
All right, any other nominations? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Our Emergency Management Director, we have two positions here. Harry Ferguson's own position and Carl Ray. All right, open the floor for any here.
Nominate Carl Ray.
Oh, wait, I guess, should I do this, Katie? Because this is director and assistant director. I should divide this up. So let's, David, do you...
Yes, ma'am, I'll, I'll do Carl Ray as director.
Okay. All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Steve? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, the Assistant Director. Do we have, open the floor for any nominations here?
Well, I was going to nominate, in Harry Ferguson's place, Oris Christian for the Assistant Director, I guess, since we filled the other one.
Okay. Ors?
Did they, did they get the four votes on that?
Yes. Yeah?
Everybody voted.
Everybody voted.
That is...
Okay, I'm sorry.
See, I didn't know we were going that way. I thought we were going the reverse. I mean, we're different.
Okay, so we do have, let's, you're about to show hands, right, Katie? Because Lou said she did not vote, so let's have a show. Yeah, let's do the director first. Yes, director. Yeah, that's what we do. And David? Yeah, so it's going to be, you didn't vote. Ors didn't vote, and Luanne.
That's fine, you didn't ask for any disclaimations. That's fine.
I'm sorry, I apologize. All right, Assistant Director. And you did nominate Ors for that, correct?
Well, yeah, that was the only one that was left, so, okay.
Okay. All right. Anyone, any other? A second with Ors for Assistant Director?
I'll second.
Tim? All right, any discussion, anyone else? All right, all those in favor for Ors for Assistant Director?
Aye.
Anyone opposed or anyone abstaining?
Madam Chair, if I may, I wanted to see what the, the, what the board was able to get down in the minutes. And I don't know that the first vote was clear. She doesn't have it recorded that she's, that three people did not vote on that. So, I don't know, if there was four votes.
Well, yeah. No, Carl, because I thought, because that's what David put him down. So... If she hasn't recorded, do we need to redo this?
The motion was clear that the director was the first one to be voted on.
Because I did ask to back up, because it was two.
And, and I, and I did hear that personally, me, I did hear that we needed to split them instead of taking them, just appointing both the board, the director and the two votes.
I agree with that, but there was no noes in there. So it was just, it was all, it wasn't asked for by the chair, that's fine.
I'm sorry, I'll make sure that I say no or ask for abstaining.
I, I mean, I do think we want our record to be clear. I mean, the people that, that be accurate, the people that did not vote yes would have voted, voted no. I mean, we do, we do need something recorded properly for the minutes.
So would, Ors, Lou and Tim, would y'all vote no or would you abstain?
On what?
On the director position.
Exactly, and assistant vote.
Well, just the direct, just the...
I vote no.
Okay.
No.
I was going to be a no because I felt like that large position needed to be in that. That's just a personal opinion of mine.
And I'm sorry, that's my fault. I, I thought everyone voted yes on that, and I apologize. All right, the next thing we have is our Budget and Finance Committee. And is, my understanding, is this an appointed or is this to be voted? Katie?
Chair.
Just appoints, that's what I thought, because it's for one year. Okay. That is my position, so at this time, I'm going to ask Tim Lovelace if he will help serve with me on the Budget Committee. And Katie, can I make this point that if for some reason that I'm not available or I'm out of town, can I have Mr. Christian sit in my place? Not that there'll be three of us there, but that I don't hold up the process. Because when you look at the calendar, we've got several meetings coming up. Can I do that?
Yes, I think you can have some, as long as...
As long as they're not third.
The importance is, is that only two members can be at a meeting without having to advertise or have a committee.
Correct. So if there is one of these dates that's in the book that we have, I will ask that Mr. Christian come sit in my place if I'm not available at those meetings. So, Mr. Lovelace, if you don't care to help me for one year with the Budget and Finance, and Mr. Christian will sit in if I'm not available. Or if Tim's not available, that will be our alternate. That there will never be three there, but there'll be two of us.
Correct. I mean, you would have three members on the committee, it's just, you know, if you had a committee meeting, only two of you would need to be present. And so that would just need to be determined who that was going to be.
Yes. All right, thank you. Yes, that's what I meant to do. All right, our Regional Jail Board. This is concurrent and runs with our term. I will separate this. There's two positions. One was Mr. Harry Ferguson's and Tim Lovelace. So at this time, I'll open the floor for, to fill the one position that was Mr. Ferguson's. Do I have a motion for anyone to serve on that?
Well, Madam Chair, I'll make the motion that Oris Christian serve on the Regional Jail Board.
Have a second?
Second.
Tim? All right, any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone no?
No.
Okay. Okay. Six more. All right, next. Oh, I'm sorry. I will, the second one, I will. Next one is the position that Mr. Lovelace currently holds. Do I have a motion for that position?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that Tim Lovelace continue that position if he's willing to.
Okay. Anyone else? Any others? A second? Tim? Second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone no? Anyone abstaining? All right, Tim? Mr. Christian and Tim will continue to serve on the Regional Jail Board. All right, our Chief Local Elected Official, the Clio Board. It's called the Workforce Board. I will now open the floor for anyone that would like to serve on that. Motion for that?
Nominate Luanne Wallace if she's willing.
Second.
Discussion, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Does anybody else on this board want to, want to take that on?
Your plates have holes.
I know we, I know we know. Well, we couldn't find anybody before, if you'll remember, and I took that on. So I'm offering it up if anybody wants it, but I'll take it since, for discussion purposes only. So if you all don't want it, I'll be your Clio. Anybody else? I'm so shocked, I can't even say it.
All right, discussion, discussion. All right, all those in favor of Luanne?
Aye.
Anyone no? Abstaining? All right. Next is the Community Policy Management Team, which runs with the DSS Board. You need to pay the expenses and bills for DSS. All right, do we have a motion for that position?
This is the Community Policy Management Team?
Yes.
I'll nominate Rebecca Dyne.
Anyone else? All right, all those for Rebecca?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? A sec, oh, I'm sorry. Okay, second. Let's back up then, I made a mistake on that.
I'll second.
All right, thank you, Carl. Now, let's go back to vote again. I'm sorry, I apologize, folks. All those in favor are voting?
Aye.
Any no's? Any opposed? Any abstaining? All right, next, we have our Fannie Community Center. And there are two positions open. There's two, two-year terms. Carl and David, those are y'all's areas.
Do we have any motions?
Can we do both of those or send them?
Okay, we should be able to do both these points.
Yes. Both, okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
David, and they both want to serve, yes, I'll send that. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone no? Any abstaining? All right. Mr. Captain and Mr. Till, we'll both be back on the Fannie Community Center. All right, our next item is citizens' community, a comment period time, three minutes. State your name and address. And they brought me the sheet and no one signed up, but if there's anyone in here now that would like to speak. If you did not get to sign up, if you'd like to speak now. Any citizen? All right, seeing if there's none, we'll move on to our Constitutional Officers' Reports and Requests. And the only person I see is your new treasurer. Would you like to speak now?
Please.
Okay. Clark, I'm sorry, was that you?
No, she was, she was.
She was here, but I didn't see her, so.
Madam Chair, I'd just like to congratulate each one of you on your election. Wanted to let you know what's going on in our office. We just got through, with tax collections for the fall. Collections were pretty close to what they were last year, we're up just a little bit, which is good. We've got a few things going on down there now. We're going to be sending out second notices in a few days. After those go out, we're doing a set off right now, which is where we can go in and collect on people's income taxes when they start filing income taxes. If they've not paid their taxes, we're working on that. After that's done, and the second notice deadline's up, we're going to be doing DMV stops, which will collect, help collect some more on personal property taxes. I just wanted to let you know that we are staying busy. We're not maybe the favorite office in the building. But it is our job to collect taxes, and that's what we're trying to do, to get more revenue in. We're looking at other ways that we may possibly can get some more revenue in for the county. And I'd like to come back at a later time and talk to you guys about that. But I just want you to know my door's open. If you guys need anything, if you need any reports, if you need to know where we stand on collections, with not only taxes, but, you know, other areas, just say the tipping fees or anything else that we have, we're more than welcome to help you with that. Anything that we can do to make your job easier, that's what we're there for, so that's all I needed, wanted to say.
Do you happen to know what percentage you are about now collecting on taxes?
I don't have the actual percentages, but we have collected a little over nine point seven million dollars from July to just, to now. We're up almost three hundred thousand from what we were this time last year. So every little bit helps.
We need it. Thank you, appreciate your being...
Any more questions?
Thank you.
Hi.
Thank you. All right, next, we have our County Attorney Reports and Requests. Miss Katie?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The only thing that I have is the county personnel policy. And that's something that we've been working on, trying to get finalized for a little while now. And Lonzo did inform me this week that he's made several changes. And so I, I'll need to review that, but hopefully we'll have that before the February, for the February meeting, for the board to approve then. The, what Lonzo informed me was, it was a pretty lengthy document. And I think he's, I think he's been able to take out about twenty-five pages of it. So I'll need to look and see what, what changes he's made and make sure everything that's, needs to be in there is sufficient.
Thank you. Next, we have our County Administrator Reports and Requests.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First on the County Administrator Report is the 2020 Legislative Forum that will be January the twenty-first through the twenty-third in Richmond, Virginia. The Russell County Board of Supervisors will be attending a legislative forum in conjunction with the, all the other localities within southwest Virginia. During this period, it gives the Board of Supervisors an opportunity to talk to not only the local legislators, but the state legislators and the governor's office on what we need in Russell County and, and what we're looking at coming through of the state laws and local laws. So, and it also is a great opportunity for Russell County to be able to put, with the new legislation, our desires of what the board wants, but also it is a great opportunity for funding. We, in previous years, this board has done a great job in advocating for the county and funding for the schools. Y'all seen it in the paper, you have seen what's coming between the grants that we get on a continuous basis, which is, you know, astronomical here in the county over the last three or four years. So this is part of that process upfront. So we put our desires and our needs and requests in before the, the state legislators. Next is the B dot IACM on Route six sixty-three. This is a bridge replacement for, on Route six sixty-three. This is B Dot's flow plane report that the Board of Supervisors must look at and review to ensure that we're standing in compliance with all federal and state agencies. The report, you have a comprehensive report in your packet to be able to review. It is a bridge replacement on Route six sixty-three. And the, it is a complete replacement of the bridge carrying Route six sixty-three over Weaver Creek. Space structure six zero eight three in Russell County. It's an existing forty-nine foot long by thirteen foot wide. It's a two, it's a two-span bridge that will be replaced with a single-span that will be twenty-foot-wide bridge. The existing in-stream piers will be removed. Next, on the County Administrator Report is the Department of Social Services Dashboard Report as in the packets with... And for the ones in the audience, this is the location of the bridge replacement over Weaver Creek. Next, on the County Ministry Report is, of course, the DSS. This is a dashboard, this is a quarterly reporting mechanism that the Department of Social Services has with all, all the programs within the county. As you can see, our, our programs are running in or above the state requirements as far as the Department of Social Services. We, our current quarter was at ninety-nine point seven. Out of the prior quarter was ninety-eight point four. So between the programs, of all the programs, even on the temporary, and this is very comprehensive, and it's on our website if you want to look at it, and it's on DSS. It deals with the adult programs and the foster ch, on the youth programs, the foster programs and the youth programs. Right now, the county is either meeting or exceeding our requirements. Next, on the County Ministry Report is the State and Local Interest and Financial Disclosure Statements. This is just a report to the board that it's that time again with newly-elected members to complete their economic interest and financial disclosures. Next, on the, the County Ministry Request is the Fiscal Year 2021 Budget Schedule. This is the schedule that was in your packet. I, I will need a motion to approve these dates and schedules based off the time frames or any recommendations or changes.
All right, do we have a motion to accept? There are eleven dates. And you'll see why I said we need an alternate in case we can't be there. So at this time, do we have a motion to accept this calendar?
Well, I'll make a motion that we accept the calendar, but I'm not the bunch that's on the budget stuff, so... You all need to work that out.
Yep. We'll clean your dates, all right, in a second.
Second.
Carl, thank you. All right, all those in favor? This is our, this will be all the meetings that we'll have to be making with our departments and officials and offices. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any no's? Any abstains? All right.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next, on the County Ministry Request is a public hearing date for the litter ordinance. This is a, something that had in previous board meetings that, not only the board, but other areas and residents within the communities has requested that issues have came up concerning litter and litter ordinances on the right-of-way and personal property. This is actually templated off, it is, it models what the state is. The Russell County Board of Supervisors could go more restrictive than the ordinance of the state, but this is modeled off, currently off the state ordinance. So we can go more restrictive, but not less restrictive. So I need a public hearing to look at this. And any county residents has an opportunity to be able to review it. It's in my office and it'll be on the website to take a look at it. But I need a motion for the scheduled public hearing at the next board date on February the third.
I'll make a motion that we have a public hearing on the litter ordinance.
Do we have a second? Carl, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any no's? Any abstains? So we will be discussing this in February. All right, next is a noise order. Swanto, what do you have, Madam Chair?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next is a request by the County Minister for a public hearing for the noise ordinance. Again, we've had requests from locals, you know, from citizens and from the law enforcement to review our current noise ordinance. This is, there's not current, and this will be new and implemented. Right now, the county does not have a noise ordinance in place. So this is tailored and modeled after the other one hundred and thirty-three municipalities within the state. And of course, the Board Su, it was tailored and modeled and written on context. It's within southwest Virginia. As, as some, some board members have pointed out, you know, especially the hunting area guns, it is very generalized. It does take all of that in consideration of our area and our culture and where we live. So I need a public hearing, and again, the, the general public can have, take a look at it, it's on our website.
Do we have a motion to set the public hearing for this?
Do we need, do we need to have a discussion about that?
When, when, we, when we have a first and a second, and then we'll open it for discussion.
Yes. I'll make a motion that we schedule the noise ordinance public hearing.
Do we have a second? You can second it, and then we'll discuss. You want to second it?
I'll second it.
All right, Ors, we'll just second it. All right, open for discussion.
My question is, what type of noise that they are complaining about? Dog?
Uh, no, mostly...
We had one that came and complained about loud music next door. That was one city.
I had, I had one.
I had someone who came up to the next to the college. It comes from out the guy that was complaining. He really did this away from the guy that spoke and making the noise. He said, he didn't know why he'd be complaining, he'd have to own his porch to be able to hear this going on. So, some people, you know, we live in a rural country environment, and we should watch how we want to try to control somebody else's noise. I never asked me, so you're joking, playing with the grass outside? I said, you don't bother me if you do, I'll let you know, but I don't stay up complaining and wanting to know what's going on in the noise. So, we're not taking consideration...
Yes. And this does, and this does, Mr. Christian, it really does. It's been looked at, the staff has looked at it. These were some of the issues that we had. We had several people that came and spoke because some people were setting these great big speakers out in their yards, and at two and three and four in the morning, the music was horrendous. We had no ordinance to go by. So I think Mr. Eaton's had some complaints in his area also with some noise and, and maybe Mr. Reading. I can't think of who all has had these complaints, but...
Really, when in my district, it was down in Port Marry, and I met a lady and she called me.
Okay.
At, at any rate, this will all be addressed in the public hearing. That's the time for discussion.
Yes.
You know, that's what it is in this environment.
Yep. All right. All those in favor for the scheduled noise ordinance public hearing? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? It'll be in February, it'll be... Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next is the Dan Community Redevelopment Project, the DMME AML Agreement. This is part of the DMME AML grant that was given to the Dan... This is part of the DMME AML grant that was given to the Dan Community Redevelopment Project to develop trails. This is the agreement for the project between Russell County and the Department of Mining and Mineral and Energy concerning the, the AML grant. I need a motion and approval on this agreement. Those within the papers.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Dan Community Redevelopment Project agreement through DMME and the AML project.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Steve, all right, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any no's? Any abstaining? All right. Next, Lonzo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next is the request by the county registrar's office for new computers. And in this issue that, knowing that the multiple elections that are coming up, they had requested new computers. But when I had it to look at, I had the IT, our IT staff to take a look at upgrading the existing ones and upgrading the operating systems and operating the random access memory. So I asked my staff to give, you know, an option one and two, either to upgrade the existing ones with our staff or to purchase new ones. So to the board supervisors, there's two options. There's thirty-three computers, which we can, option one, which is thirty-one nine and six eighty-three, which is the upgrade, or option two, which is to purchase new laptops, which is twenty-one thousand and forty-two dollars. So I need a motion.
And either way?
On option one or option two.
Well, I'd just like to get a motion on the floor so we could discuss this.
Okay.
I would too. I'll, I'll make a motion we accept option one for starters.
All right, do we have a second? And we'll open it for discussion. Do we have a second?
Okay, second for discussion.
All right, Wood.
Great. You start, Tim.
Twenty-fourteen is when these were purchased.
Yes, it was purchased in twenty-fourteen.
Okay, five, well, that's five years. That's pretty much the life of one. So I guess my question is, how long do we expect that's going to buy us? I mean, I know there's a big difference between twenty-one thousand and thirty-one hundred, but I know in the school system, you can certainly throw good money after bad and try to upgrade stuff.
And, and those are very bad questions. What, what myself and the IT looked at, the first one, we immigrate, no matter what department it is, whether it's registrar's office or, or one of the county offices, how often is it used? What is it used for? What is its crunching power? What, how often are these used? These are only utilized during the election. These are only to keep tabulations and et cetera. So right now, running off the Windows and running with the extra mega RAM, my IT staff, it was said that it would sufficiently meet their operating capacity or, or need.
So these are not the ones in the registrar's office?
These are the ones in, no. These are the thirty-three that are, that are moved out just during the elections.
No. Okay, well, I had some concerns and I'm, I'm referring to the IT people because I'm certainly not one of those. I'm a Gabby, but I'm not an IT lady. So anyway, my concern is that the election of officers, our, our state officials, our president, which is coming up in March.
Yeah, we have four.
And so it's crucial that these machines work at top-notch capacity. And so is this thirty-one hundred dollars? Is that inclusive of the labor that it's going to take to do all that?
That includes the labor. It is most of the labor. See, these, these computers were first purchased by the state of Virginia. These were paid for by the state. With what they utilize them for and what, and we looked at that. Now, the ones that they have in their office, we're going to replace those because those are utilized on a daily basis by the registrar's office, the desktops. These are the laptops that are utilized just during each election. Based off of what my IT people sit down and went through and said, okay, well, what do you do with them and what's the capacity? What you, what you utilize them for? They're on the internet. We make sure that they're up and they're running. And with us upbuilding an additional random access memory, it is equivalent to the ones that Chuck is sitting in front of you. And Tim, Tim knows that what, what we're upgrading to.
One more question, if I may. Our registrar, who, what, what does our registrar say? Are they, is that office and that board satisfied with option one?
I'm hoping that, and here's Archie back. Archie, you're looking at the registrar's office and, and as long as they operate during the capacity during the election, these jobs are jacked.
Last two times, the last two times that we have, we've had the IT people come in to help us during the election. And they even failed to think. So we have got some computer problems. And those, those things were bought. They wouldn't even run programs that the state had, time we got them and everything. They wouldn't even run programs the state had evolved, accepted. And we're having problems with them. Even, they won't even communicate between each other, some of them.
Yeah, and this, this leaves Windows eight point one on. So we may really, we need to run ten.
No.
It has to run ten.
It, it is going to run at ten. And one of the things that I worked. The one that, and that's because we're doing it for free. Based off the current licensing, we, what we have right now, we can upgrade to Windows ten without any additional costs. That's because we got the licensing and we're going to upgrade, you know, the transition. So by the time that we upgrade the RAM and, and run the rest, the interoperability that they had before was because of the Windows ten. That was the reason. So we're upgrading to the Windows ten. We're going to upgrade the RAM, which will speed it up. So based off of that, we've tested one already and it has, and it has passed every time. So that, right now, based off the current capacity and what they need during the elections, I'm being told by my IT people that this will meet their needs.
So updating to, to Windows ten is free?
Yes. See, ten can be upgraded for free, yes. Ten knows, yes.
But I, but I have concerns if they have concerns. I mean, I, I know what this is like and it's, it's got to work when we're having an election. I mean, I'm not falling asleep spending an eighteen thousand dollars.
My biggest thing about it is that we're being watched during elections. And we don't, we don't need to have problems.
And that's why we're pre-testing them. We're, we're, we're currently pre-testing them.
Professional.
But it's at the discretion of the board.
Uh, next question, if I may. If the board chooses to go with option B, um, I'm not on that page and I can't see that. It was twenty-seven thousand dollars more, thirty, thirty thousand dollars more?
Twenty-one thousand.
Eighteen difference.
Dear Lord.
Eighteen thousand difference.
Eighteen thousand difference. So Lonzo, you happen to have any extra money laying around anywhere? Of course you haven't got any.
My question, um, will the state come back and reimburse you for this?
Thank you.
Mr. Palmer, will they come back and if we, if we have to purchase these brand-new computers, what's the check? You don't know?
They reimburse on a lot of stuff. And this year, you know, they're even reimbursing us on our, supposed to, they reimburse us on our, uh, pay. So y'all got a check last year. You know how much you got from the state that which was supposed to, the barbie registrar's office in the election. So, uh, I don't know the figures, but.
Well, let's do one more thing here. And this is on my recommendation. You got two options here. Let me call the state Virginia registrar's office and see what the possibility. They know that if it comes, when it comes down to funding, you know, I'm, I'm always asking with my hand out. So let me go to the registrar's state Virginia and see what the possibility of this, you know, being done. And if, and being reimbursed. The problem with this is it, it was not on budget line. This was unanticipated. And I was trying to meet the needs of the registrar's office most, with the most conservative way that we could do it, get it done.
Right, and it's, and it's just January. So we're, I mean, we've got.
The first one is March, the.
Democrat primary.
Oh, that's right.
Third forward, yeah, we got forward. We got forward this year.
We got that and the town.
You got the first one in March, is that right?
First one in March. Uh, absentee ballots, uh, absentee voting starts next week.
My IT staff says that.
But you won't need this for that, will you?
No, not for that.
That's what I was thinking.
So based off, the next board meeting is February the third. My IT staff says they can upgrade the existing ones in one week and then, then give them a couple of days to test. Or I can order these, these are under state contract, you know. I can have them here within three to five days and start testing. So I could, if you wanted, wait until the February third board meeting and see whether the state will reimburse. I can have them fully implemented, either the existing ones or the new ones by middle of February.
Well, Katie, how do we, um, because we, we made a motion on option one and we seconded and we, um, had discussion. Can we just table this?
Well, but you need to, first, there's a motion and second or fourth. You have to either vote or rescind the motion. And then, and then make a motion to table it. So if that's what the board wishes to do, then Tim would need to make a motion to rescind his, um, motion and Luanne would need to rescind her second.
One more question before we do that, so while we're still in discussion. So come February third, um, and we decide whatever we're going to do to this, do we still have time to buy new computers?
Yes, ma'am, that's what I was saying before.
And get the registrar's office up and going for the first primary and everything else that's going to hit in March?
If, if you decide to table this until the third meeting, I will have time to retrofit the existing ones in time or order the new ones and test them. See, either way, each one of them by the second week of February, either the new ones that is being re-upgraded or the new ones will be done in and tested by the second week of February.
Okay, and I understand that technology moves at the speed of light. So with that being said, considering that we've heard some issues from the first round of computers that was bought five years ago and how they didn't work, I don't even know if we have a guarantee that these things will function properly.
And that's why we're going to test them. Even on the new ones, you know, there's no guarantee.
Dear Lord. Okay, thank you.
All right, Lou, there's a motion on the floor, on the floor and we've had a second. Do you want to rescind your motion?
I do.
All right, Lou, you'll second that rescind?
I'll second, I'll second that rescind.
We'll rescind. And do now, do we have a motion on the floor to table this until Lonzo can find out if they will reimburse us for this and, and the cost?
So move.
All right, Tim, second?
Second.
Coral, any discussion on this? We'll just hold off till February the third, all right? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anybody abstaining? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, next one on the county administrative request. This is the Russell County Combined and Rescue reimbursement. This is a request from the Russell County Search and Rescue Team for two thousand dollars. We actually, this was a line that board supervisors budgeted into their IS for the, their expenditures. Y'all have had an opportunity to take a look at those. The board, the search and rescue had expended actually forty-four thousand and three dollars and fifty-eight cents and they're only asking for their appropriate amount of two thousand dollars. So I need a motion for reimbursement of the Russell County Combined Search and Rescue reimbursement of expenditures of two, two thousand dollars.
So move.
All right, Steve, do we have a second?
Second.
Tim, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposing? Nope, anyone abstaining? Okay.
Next on the county administrative reports is travel request. This is for the registrar's office for voter restoration. This is to attend the annual election board meeting. Is that right? Yes. On March the nineteenth through the twenty-second, uh, two thousand and twenty, for Diane Shorter and Yvonne Cook, Herbert Scott, to attend the forum that is from March the twentieth to the twenty-second of two thousand and twenty at the Homestead Hot Springs, Virginia. I need your approval.
Do we have a motion to approve this travel request? All right, David, second. Steve, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposing? Any abstaining? All right, next.
Madam Chair, that concludes the.
Oh, we have a travel for, um.
I'm sorry, Dennis.
Kelly, Jewel Blackwell and Kelly McBride, deal.
Yes, I'm sorry. I'm about to get a healthcare, is she here? She still here?
Yep.
Sorry about that. This is for the Russell County Public Library to attend the Public Library Association Conference on, at Nashville, Tennessee. This is from February the twenty-fifth through February the twenty-ninth of two thousand and twenty. And this is, I also want to point out, as y'all can see, this is the friends of the library and the state aid will pay for these expenses.
All right, do we have a motion to approve this travel?
So the.
Lou, second. Steve, all right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposing? And anybody abstaining? All right. Prove that, you know. Thank you.
Sorry about that, ma'am. Uh, that concludes county administrative reports and requests.
All right. Next on the agenda is matters presented by the board. Tim, do you have anything?
Just one quick thing. I, I thought I might have someone here speak on this, but they didn't make it. So I'll do it for them. Uh, there's some concern with the Moccasen, um, portion of the Copper Creek Moccasen Fire Department that if there's an incident down in Moccasen Valley that they have to come all the way out to Hansonville to fill the truck up. They'd like to drill away over near the fire department, somewhere in that immediate area. They've asked if we could look at helping them with that. So I think we need to at least look into this for them. Because there's not adequate water down in Moccasen.
I'm sorry, Tim. I apologize. All right, anything else? All right, Lou?
Uh, yeah, I'd like to have the building official to kind of go back and, and I'm, I'm looking at some of our dilapidated structure ordinances of our housing that we've got on our list. It's in the back of our portfolios. And, um, and he's following up, but he's looking for, um, board of supervisor procedures and how we need to proceed. I see this on several of these. So, um, I'm just asking where we are and what we need to do to enact some of this to make it happen.
Coral?
I have nothing further.
Thank you.
No, I have nothing.
Steve?
The only thing I have is, is that we have this, uh, legislature reception coming up on the twenty-first, the twenty-second, actually. We leave on twenty-first, is that right, Lonzo?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so how many people are going?
Right now, enough for a core.
We're going, we're going to adjourn.
Yeah, we've got, we're going to make the move.
Well, it would not be Jim's fault.
Yep. All right, Wood, do you have anything you would say?
No, I don't.
All right. Um, Steve, I know you've sent out some message. I do want to acknowledge a child that we will recognize her next month is a little girl collected food and things for our animal shelter and she will be invited to our next board meeting. We'll say thanks to that. And we did have a donation to. And we did have a donation to the animal shelter to help pay expenses, and we need to thank, that was an anonymous donation, but we do need to thank that person for, for that.
It was a ten thousand dollar donation.
That's, that's wonderful, that's a substantial amount. So we do need to thank those citizens, although it was anonymous, we did give you a shout-out. All right, with nothing there, I do want to say that we need a motion to reconvene, not to adjourn, we're going to adjourn to reconvene to meet in Richmond on Tuesday, January the twenty-first at the Legislative. So I need a motion for us to reconvene there.
Madam Chair, you need to state the time as well.
What do y'all think? Six o'clock, like a regular meeting? At the hotel, okay, I'll say that. Yeah, yeah, we'll reconvene to meet at six PM in Richmond on the twenty-first at the hotel.
Make a motion, we reconvene, adjourn to reconvene on the twenty-first at six PM at the hotel in Richmond. Which hotel? The Hilton, is the Hilton, downtown Hilton.
All right, second?
Second.
Lou, all right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any noes? All right, any abstaining? All right, we will reconvene in Richmond.